Good afternoon, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call our City Council Work Session to Order. A first item for discussion will be receiving updates to the City of Suffolk, Chapter 38 Fire Prevention and Protection Code. Mr. Manager.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. At your seats is a revised ordinance amending Chapter 38 Fire Prevention and Protection of the Code of the City of Suffolk. The ordinance is on tonight's agenda under Consent Agenda, Item Number 7. But we have made some revisions over the last few days, so at that time, we will probably be pulling the ordinance from under Consent Agenda and then hearing it later during the regular session under ordinances. At this time, Chief Baraki will review the proposed amendments to reflect today's organization and bring the code in line with the Virginia State Fire Code and the International Fire Code Chief. We also have with us tonight Fire Marshal Chris Cornwell.
Mr. Moore, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. It's our honor to be standing with you today. We're going to go over an overview of what we have done with the direction of Mr. Moore and staff to make some edits to Chapter 38, the Fire Prevention and Protection portion of our code. We really felt in discussion, Mr. Moore and I, for maybe several years, that the name Suffolk Fire and Emergency Medical Services was outdated for and not contemporary to what we do. So that's one thing we looked at. Another thing we looked at was looking at the organizations for which over the last 20 years have provided services and have changed over the last 20 years, so make that in line to the organizations that provide services. And finally, we decided that it was excellent to look at the fire code itself as it relates to the statewide fire prevention code and relates to our amendments here in the city. Fire and rescue is kind of the nomenclature that's utilized in most municipal fire departments across the country, and we have been calling ourselves Suffolk Fire Rescue for years. Again, the code says Suffolk Department of Fire and Emergency Medical Services, so everywhere in the code in Chapter 38, you'll see that the name has Emergency Medical Services will be now Rescue, and that's to show the all hazards responses that we provide, certainly fire suppression. We also provide, as you know, advanced and basic life support, treatment and transport to area hospitals, certainly technical rescue, hazardous materials response, marineship or firefighting, search and rescue, mass casualty. So that's where that rescue kind of incorporates the fire and the rescue on that. The next thing that we looked at was the organizations within the city that provide our services. Everybody's very knowledgeable to know at one time Waylville and Holland, and certainly Driver, Nansma Suffolk, Bennetts Creek, they all provided services, and Chukatuck as well. And over the years voluntarily, those organizations stopped providing services for which the career staff has now absorbed that. So we felt like it was important to leave in there that at any point, if any organization wants to provide services as a volunteer agency, that the City Council has that right. So not that was removed, but the actual organizations other than the career staff was amended. The third thing that we looked at relates to our fire code. So Chief Cornwell is our code official, our fire official. So obviously, through the code, the fire chief delegates that, in this case, the Chief Cornwell. But we adopt the statewide fire prevention code, and that's through the International Fire Code, IFC, and we adopt the statewide fire prevention code. We're going to go ahead and update from 2018 to 2021 version, which is part of this as well, in that we want it to better reflect the way the city is right now as it reflects to fire flows, as it reflects to the opportunities with our systems, with our utility systems and all that have been improved much greater in the last 20 years. And with that, we're going to align how we do fire flows with IFC, International Fire Code, Appendix B, like boy. Also, in the Code of Suffolk, we cannot be less restrictive than what the IFC or the Virginia Statewide Fire Prevention Code is. We, in our code, can be more restrictive. And with that, being more restrictive sometimes needs to be looked at because the city does change based on utility systems, et cetera, over the years, and that's one thing we did. And one thing that we're going to add is we're going to look at all fire hydrants shall be, or excuse me, William, all hydrants to be connected to municipal water supply unless approved by the fire official. So we're going to take out what we call yard hydrants, hydrants that are connected to a system that is from a tank or something like that, and allow our utility system here to supply our suppression system on the exterior of the building, which is really a good win for us. And the final thing that we looked at at the direction of Mr. Moore was open burning. We did not make any changes to that part of the code. Myself, Chief Cornwell, the fire marshal, and staff all agreed that it's well-written. It really comes down to what we call enforcement. So many times when a person calls 911 to complain of an open fire, or a complaint of an open burning complaint, we always send a fire truck out immediately. Many times, the citizen is very compliant with that and will suppress their fire by themselves with their garden hose or their ability to suppress the fire. The engine company clears, does report, and then we never hear more complaints from there. If it gets to the point where the citizen is not compliant with the Code, the Code of Suffolk, and then it's elevated to Chief Cornwell's office, we always have either a person, a fire marshal on duty and/or on call all the time, then the fire marshal will visit that person and advise them what the code is, and if they don't come in compliance and we have other means, some is other things to try to get that person. But rarely does it ever get to that point. Most of the time, a nuisance call of a neighbor burning will be suppressed and will be done with by the time the fire truck leaves. So we felt like it was more of an enforcement item than it was a code change. And with that, I stand ready, as well as Chief Cornwell, to answer any questions for you as it relates to what we're doing with Chapter 38. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Council, any questions or comments? Councilmember Wright, hold on one second. Wait a minute, let me get you turned on here. One minute, we'll get there. There we go.
Okay, thank you. So on the open burn policy, so as long as the location, like in a residential area, if the person is burning more than 300 feet from an occupied building, and if they're within that 300 feet, they have to have permission. So when you say enforceable, that means if my neighbor next door to me is less than 300 feet, they're out of code and I can call and have enforcement?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And the most immediate thing would be a fire truck, a suppression apparatus. And from there, if your neighbor's not compliant with the orders of the fire, in that case, they become the fire official, then it elevates to the fire marshal.
Okay. I have one more question. So I see that we made changes to Section 507.3. My question is, the new additional language, in addition to the Appendix B, says that fire flows required shall be the greater of the internal demand, which is the sprinkler, standpipe, et cetera, or the external demand. Can that formula ever produce a low but potentially inadequate fire flow?
Thank you for a great question, Chief. Cornwell.
Thank you for your question.
You're welcome.
I really appreciate that. As your city's fire official, I've stated previously, and my stance hasn't changed as it pertains to Municipal Fire Code, Section 507.3, and that's simply that I'm not in favor of repealing it at all for that very reason. I feel that it does. Anytime we jeopardize reducing the amount of water available to our fire suppression personnel, we run that risk. And though what we're proposing here is completely compliant with code, as has been presented, and reverting back to that state code section, becoming less restrictive by standard, it is a reduction in the amount of flow that is available, therefore a reduction in the amount of water that would be available for suppression personnel to fight fire with. And I can provide a great example of that. If you look above your heads, you'll see the sprinklers in the ceiling. If we were in 200,000-plus-square-foot warehouse, by definition, mega warehouse, these would be ESFR sprinkler heads. If the ones in this room, just the number of the ones in this room activated, and this code had been adopted, they would be using all of the water that's available to us in suppression, every last bit of it, so that when we arrived on scene with our fire trucks, there wouldn't be any water left for us to go inside and try to mop up, or to go inside and try to fully suppress the fire. That's my concern. There would be nothing left for me, the fire official, to hold anyone's feet to the fire with when it came to development regarding elevated tanks, grain tanks, pumps, et cetera, as far as meeting that demand. And I know the question has always been, well, how can everybody else do it? How does everybody else meet that same state standard? Virginia Beach isn't even doing this. Yes, they adhere to the state standard. However, there's other provisions in place to ensure that their safeguards are met as far as building construction, that ensure they don't have million-square-foot warehouse complexes completely unprotected by any other provision, firewalls, limitations on the GPM requirements with building construction, et cetera. So I feel like by reverting back completely to the state standard would leave us completely wide open for problems down the road.
Sorry, sorry. What is your name? I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, one more time.
Your last name?
My last name's Cornwell. My name's Chris Cornwell. I'm the fire official for the City of Suffolk.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I address you by your name.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Cornwell, I want to make sure I understand this. So 507.3 is the fire flow. We are adopting the state code, which the state code says that it has to be an approved method. We're citing here that the approved method is Appendix B of the IFC. The difference, though, so we are citing correctly that we are going to use Appendix B with the fire flow requirements. The new language, though, that has been added is the greater of the internal demand or the external demand. And I want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly. So you're saying that that deviation from strictly Appendix B, because Appendix B has the tables that have, like, the size of the building is this big, and so if it's this big, it has to have this amount of fire flow going to that building. By modifying that, am I hearing you say, I just want to make sure
Sure.
that that weakens Appendix B strictly on its own?
Yes, ma'am. An example would be if our internal demand is 2,000 gallons per minute and our external demand is 2,000 gallons per minute. The way it's currently written, now you would add those two together, giving us a total of 4,000 gallons per minute. So if we have brought these sprinkler heads that I mentioned earlier in my example, were flowing that internal demand total, 2,000 gallons per minute, when we arrived on scene, we'd still have that 2,000, that external demand would still be there. The external 2,000 gallons would still be available because it's required in our current code. So if we eliminated that when we arrived on scene, it would only be the greater of the two. The greater of the two would be flowing already. There wouldn't be the external demand requirement there for us available to flow on the exterior, if you will. It's essentially slicing that number in half. But taking the greater of the two, we'd only have half the amount available.
Okay, so I'm tracking.
Councilmember, may I, may I add, ma'am?
Yeah, can I ask one more follow-up question? So if that is the case, how does that impact? Because these are three key things for me when I'm looking at this. How does that impact, one, our firefighters when they have to fight a fire? Two, how does that impact our capital investments? So we're asking for another ladder truck, and that costs millions of dollars. How is that going to impact our capital investments? And how is that going to impact the property surrounding if we can't suppress the fire in enough time? Is it that type of impact?
Would you like to answer? I can provide an example to your question, number two, as far as the property itself. There's countless examples of where these warehouse, and I use that as an example because that's where it's really affecting code. And code, in my opinion, in my research, as the subject matter expert, hasn't really caught up with where we are. I feel like Suffolk and where our code is currently is really advanced, far beyond where the state code is. I think we're ahead of the game, honestly, as far as where our code currently is. But in Indiana, a 1.2 million-square-foot Walmart warehouse caught on fire. The fire department responded. There was white cold smoke at the ceiling, nothing showing. They made entry. When they made their way to the sprinkler room, the pump was cavitating, meaning the pump didn't have water because it had used all the water that was available in the tank, the onsite tank. It was gone. No more water left. So at that juncture, they made the decision to turn that sprinkler off inconsequential because it didn't have any more water left. When they did, the fire conditions changed almost immediately. They had to call a Mayday to get the firefighters. Long story short, they lost the entire 1.2 million-square-foot Walmart distribution center. Walmart subsequently filed a $50 million tort claim against the 33, I believe, fire departments that responded to that particular incident. So there are consequences when there aren't proficient means taken up front to ensure that there are adequate resources, such as water, available for these types of things. And I'll let the chief answer your other two questions, if that's all right.
Yes.
Councilmember, thank you so much. If I get, I guess I'd like to say, first of all, that the desire of myself and staff when we met about this adoption was to look at the infrastructure that is occurring now versus probably about 20 to 21 years ago. And a combination, that coupling, will not ever provide adequate fire suppression for commodities that may be in the buildings for which are the owner, operators, or the managers of the buildings will control more so effective fire than we can ever do it, either from council or from the fire chief position or the code official. When sprinklers are placed, and are placed correctly, and they're running, we go to Appendix B, it is very, sometimes suppression occurs, not always. The idea through an FPA 13, a 13E to be exact, is that we have to have enough water to put three handlines into service. And what those three handlines would be to supplement the, as Chris utilized, Chief Cornwell, the suppression system in our building here, because firefighters are designed to suppress fires and train and equip million-dollar ladder trucks, everything you mentioned. And the coupling is not a guarantee of anything. Going to Appendix B is not a guarantee of anything, because we won't know in that example in Indiana, if the commodities or the fuels in that building were so different than what either was allowed to by code and/or by what was utilized, lithium ion batteries, polypastics, everything that goes in there, that you could have a million gallons of water to suppress. And so hypotheticals are very difficult. So what we go on is that we have a building going up in 2025. Does our code reflect the ability for your municipal fire department, Suffolk Fire, to utilize the required by the IFC and adopted of Virginia statewide fire prevention code, the water to use a suppression system which is designed to incipiate a simpy stage fire, to basically keep a fire from growing or developing, and then use firefighters from fire trucks and, question number two, capital resources, people is capital as well as fire trucks, and make entry and suppress that building fire, that warehouse fire. And I know it's always easy in fire rescue, Chief Cornwell, anybody else, to put the worst-case scenario on the table, right? And what I think responsible right now, from my position, is that with respect to the change, and then we add that second part of what we're doing, of saying that has to be connected to municipal water supply, is we're guaranteeing now that the yard hydrants will not be utilized, that the suppression will be coming from Paul and from utilities, that the water that we have on the outside, the dedicated water on the inside shouldn't change. That is going to be dedicated for suppression. Our water will be dedicated on a separate system. It could be the same system, depending on how much water is available. And so the coupling, again, I would not disagree with the fire marshal by saying it is better, but at what point does better become inefficient to produce or to provide? And that's, I think, what the dilemma we're in right now, is that we in the city right now have a very robust utility system that's getting better by the day, or you'd say better by every capital project we do. And with that, the changes here allow for the internal needs of this building, or for a warehouse, or for a mega warehouse, put water on a fire in a simpy stage. Factors will never be able to define, will be whether commodities will overtake that head, whether commodities inside that building are so great that it doesn't matter whether we have 2, 3, 4, 5,000 GPMs available. It is necessary to have enough water to suppress a fire from the inside, the internal, and the exterior, us and ladder pipes and all. But I think some of the amendments we're making here are responsible to assume that we're going to try to still allow for suppression to occur from the fire suppression system and allow us an opportunity. Again, I won't disagree with the fire marshal by saying, could it be more? But we're still adopting the International Fire Code, the statewide fire prevention code, which is a national, and in this case, Virginia adopted. And then we're adding some on top of that by saying we want to add that all hydrants come off the municipal supply. So, again, I'll never disagree with the fire code official, ever, and I'm not here to make that debate with him, but I want the council to know that from my point of view, the change that we're making is reflective of a 2025 Suffolk versus reflective of a 2022 Suffolk, yeah, 2002 Suffolk versus 2025 Suffolk. Again, I know you got your questions there.
No, that's okay. No, I think you're
And now I stand ready for follow-up questions that I'm sure I missed.
No, it's okay. So I just want to thank you. Thank you for explaining that. The next thing is, so does the IFC Appendix B on its own merit without any changes? Because that's, it's the International Fire Code that most people adopt. So the formulas that they have in there that do line up with the size of the building and the fire flow, is that not enough reasonable assurance there? Like, I guess I'm trying to figure out why the modification for the greater than.
Oh, the greater than, you know, Mr. Moore, I discussed this earlier. I think that's kind of a win, maybe not all the way to what the fire marshal desires, but it's a win. So if the building for a 200,000-square-foot says it would be 2,100 GPMs available, and then we look at what should be done, what should be available on the exterior of the building, 2,700 or whatever, Greater Good says that the developer has to provide, or utilities have to provide, 2,700 GPMs by adding that in there. But the IFC already says that. It's already written in there, the greater of the two. So.
So that's actually me into my last question. So my last question was, if it doesn't meet the Appendix B on its own, whose responsibility is it in a project? And I think I just heard you say the developer.
The building official.
Okay.
Well, the building official and the fire plans reviewer will not allow it to move forward.
Okay. But if the infrastructure's not there, whose responsibility is it to put that infrastructure in that project?
May I defer to Mr. Moore on that?
That would be the developer's responsibility.
The developer's responsibility. Okay, so now I have full picture. Got it. So we're, I want to make sure I understand. So if we deviate from strictly Appendix B, we, the city, kind of shift the burden from the developer to ourselves, because if they want their project to go forward, then they should pay for the water infrastructure to ensure safety. So if we deviate from Appendix B, which gives the required, according to the International Fire Code, the required formula, which is not a perfect formula, it says that in Appendix B, but it's tried and true across the country, internationally, across the world, that the water flow should match the chart according to the size of the building. So when we deviate from that, we're now shifting the burden from the developer to our city?
I don't think that's accurate in the fact that they have to meet that, and then they have an opportunity in the code as well to do elevated tanks to meet that. They can engineer, that's where the developer will then use engineering to meet that fire flow demand. So if utilities cannot provide that, meaning our public utilities with our water mains and our municipal water system, then there's other alternatives that a developer can utilize to meet that demand. That will not be, again, Mr. Moore, will not be on the demand of the taxpayer. The developer will then have to meet that appendix for the size of the building, and some buildings, based on the size of the water mains and the infrastructure of our utilities, will meet that based on what we, meaning the city provides. But some will have to engineer an alternative, and with that engineering will come at the burden of the developer to meet that for the plans reviewer and the fire plans reviewer to give that permit for them to continue. If they can't, then they can pull their project or work with engineers to get there. Mr. Moore, I want to make sure I was accurate on that, sir, for you.
Developer will be the responsible party should they not meet or cannot meet the fire demands under the fire demands under the current system that's available. They'll have to put in tanks, whether it's private or public. They'll have to, and I'll take CenterPoint as a prime example. CenterPoint partnered with the city when that was being developed with $1 million towards the infrastructure that was out there on 58. And that's happened, the elevated tank in Harborview was a partnership when it was first developed. So in any big project, should there be deficient fire flows, then the developer, if he wants to move ahead, needs to find a way to meet that. Again, when we talk about facilities, you always have to remember water quality too, because the more you store, the more you have to dump on the ground in the middle of August and July. So, because chlorine residual fades. So the key is finding a balance using the IFC and finding that balance on the infrastructure side versus the operating side from a domestic standpoint, too. So.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's in Section 5 of 38-73.5, talks about what can be done to meet it outside, and that's in our amendments, to meet that demand or that need.
Got it.
And that's staying in.
So that, so thank you so much for answering my questions. I just wanted to make sure that we don't have a, the changes that we make don't put us in a position to where, yes, we have flexibility to allow developers to meet or not meet the lesser than, but at the expense of safety. But you've answered my question, so I just wanted to make sure it made sense in my head, and it does. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I just, you may have gone over this, but while I was looking for the verbiage in our agenda packets, you may very easily have cleared this up, and I completely missed it. But in this little handout that we were given, it says, modify Section 507.1.1 to require fire hydrants to be connected to municipal water supply unless otherwise approved. But in our agenda packet, it says, is amended to add that all fire hydrant systems will be located off the municipal waterside, water supply unless otherwise approved by the fire officials. So I, do I pull a coin out of my pocket to find out which one's correct?
Councilman, if I may, that you're looking at the original ordinance in your book. We have a revised, and when we're talking with the fire marshal, and I believe, I think that came from Chris, is instead of saying off of, the correct word should have been connected to. And so we've made that in the new one.
All right, my apologies.
No, no, and that's why Chief Cornwall, as a fire official, was so excellent on this, because, yes, sir, that was made, yes, sir.
Counsel, any other questions, comments? Hearing none. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cornwall. I will now move on to our second item for our work session, and we will be receiving an overview of projects under the Revenue Sharing Funding Program and Transportation Alternative Funding Program. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. On tonight's consent agenda under items eight, nine, and 10, City Council will consider three resolutions regarding various city public works projects under a revenue sharing and transportation alternative funding programs. Assistant Director of Public Works, Darrell Lewis, will provide the staff report.
Okay. Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council and city staff. I'm here to just provide you additional information for the consent items on tonight's agenda, items eight through 10. And we'll start with the Kimberly Bridge. Four years ago, we applied for grant funding through the Revenue Sharing Program. To date, we have $6.5 million from that program, and since it's a matching program, we have an additional $6.5 million of matching funds for a total of $13 million. The application was based on a 2013 study that was done by one of our consulting firms, RK&amp;K, and their recommendation at that time was to simply raise the bridge. Since then, we've had a follow-up study done and completed in 2024 by Moffaty Nickel. And in their findings, they deemed the alternative to simply raise the bridge to not be the best alternative, but instead to reconstruct the bridge. The cost on that is $82 million. So what we decided to do was to leverage the existing project that we have against some of the federal programs that were instituted with the previous administration. And there was one that was tailor-made for this type of bridge that had to do with resiliency and sea level rise. However, with the current state of the economy, it's unlikely and uncertain that that funding stream or program will be available. So with that, we are asking for you to endorse a resolution for us to cancel this project that we received funding from Virginia Department of Transportation until further time when we can figure out the funding and that deficit. Then the next two consent items will have to do with the next three projects that I'll describe. The first one is the Godwin Boulevard Improvements. And again, that's a 1.5-mile widening project, basically from Kings Fork Road to the Suffolk Bypass. On there, you'll see the updated schedule that corresponds with the funding availability. And just to give you an update on this project, it's at about 60% development, design development stage. On this slide, you will see two columns. On the left column is the original estimate and budget for this project from 2020, when we applied for grant funding through the Smart Scale Program, which we received. On the right, you'll see the current estimate and budget from about two months ago, and you can see there is a delta, an increase of about $10.9 million. That is due to inflationary forces. Unit prices have gone up. In fact, yesterday, I got a response back from VDOT, and I asked them to kind of give me a picture of what prices have been doing. So they looked back six months from November of last year to April 1st of this year, and the picture that was painted is unit prices are, have increased by two times, and in some cases, they've tripled. Next is the Divergent Diamond Interchange, and this is a companion project to the Godwin Project. And again, this is basically a redesign of that interchange into a DDI. Again, the schedule will be similar to the previous projects, because they're running concurrently. And I show you the estimate on the left-hand column, the original estimate from 2020 from the Smart Scale Grant Program that we received. And on the right-hand side is the estimate from two months ago. Again, you notice another increase, similar of $11 million due to the same forces of inflation. And then finally, the Route 17 Bridge Road Widening Project. This project will, will pick up where the existing Shoulders Hill Bridge Road project ends and take the widening of Bridge Road to Harborview. And again, you see the modified and updated schedule for that project below. Here, again, I show you the initial estimate and budget from 2020 when we applied for grant funding. On the right-hand side, again, is the current estimate from February of this year, again showing an increase of $10.5 million. Now, on this slide, I took the previous new and current estimate for Bridge Road, and I broke it out into two projects, because what I'll have to do is apply for two different grant programs. The left-hand side will be applying for Revenue Sharing Funding, and that'll be for the roadway project. On the right-hand side, we'll be applying for Transportation Alternatives, which will fund the multi-use path. And I'll take time now to explain what those two programs are. For the Revenue Sharing Program, it is tailor-made for the projects that I just described, for any reconstruction or construction projects. It is a program that comes along every two years, where you're able to apply for funding. It is a matching program, so whatever VDOT gives, the locality has to match it. So it's a 50/50 program. One thing to note, that during a cycle, you're allowed to apply for $10 million total, and each individual project has a maximum lifetime allocation that you can receive from the program of $10 million. And to note, we are currently in the Revenue Sharing phase now for application. And then the final bullet there just shows how this project qualifies for the program. The second bullet there that says that meets a statewide transportation need is how this one qualifies. So what we, what I am asking tonight is, what we plan to submit in the funding application for Revenue Sharing is for Godwin Widening, $4 million request for the Route 1032 Divergent Diamond Interchange, $4 million, and for Route 17 Bridge Road Widening, $2 million, and that totals to $10 million. And then note that there's an equal match required from the locality. I want, the funds for this program will be available, and I'm sorry, that's an error, should be for fiscal year '29, which is July 1st, 2028. And then finally, the Transportation Alternatives Program is a program that funds non-motorized type projects, primarily trails and multi-use paths. This also runs on a two-year cycle, as the Revenue Sharing does. This program does require a resolution from council that shows support for the project, so at a subsequent council, I'll be coming back up to ask for a resolution for that. And the funds for this program will be available in FY '27, which starts on July 1st of 2026. This program is an 80/20 matching program, so the match per project would be at $625,000. What I will be submitting in the application for this grant program is for the Route 17 Bridge Road Project, the multi-use path portion of it for 2.5 million, and also for the Suffolk Seaboard Coastline Trail. And actually, this will be segment, the new segment west that, that goes from Prentice to Kenyon Road. And again, the funds of this project will be available July 1st of 2026. That's all I had, if there are any questions.
Right, thank you. Counsel, any questions or comments? Councilmember Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sort of paints a little bit of a scary scenario, the way that costs have been going up. I mean, clearly, we saw that with the JFK school project, but I guess there's probably no guarantee that even if we apply for these funds that you've got outlined here that we'll get them, is there?
That's correct. It is a competitive process. We've had a lot of success in applying for these, these type grants, so it's, you know, we have a very good chance of receiving this money.
And I guess, do the VDOT people give you any explanations or rationalizations or whatever as to why the cost have escalated? I mean, proportionately, they've gone up even more than hamburger.
Yeah, well, it's, so I can tell you that this is a, is not just a Suffolk issue, it's a Hampton Roads, it's a Virginia issue. VDOT is also experiencing the same type problems. I mean, in fact, they have kind of suspended some of their projects temporarily because of some of these factors of trying to figure out how to fund projects and move them along. So it's a problem that we're all facing, that we're all trying to figure out together.
Okay, thank you for that. Like I say, it presents a scary scenario as we look forward and try to get our infrastructure needs addressed.
Yes.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? I do have one question concerning the Kimberly Bridge. On the $13 million, I know we had $6.5 million, and we had a match for six and a half. Have we, have we received those funds, or are they just available to us? As far as the matching funds themselves and the other six and a half million, is that, has that been in our capital program?
Yes, so we, we have the six and a half million from VDOT available, and actually, we applied for 10, so we were, we have six and a half, and they were to give us future allocations. We did have the matching funds, so none of that's been spent at all, so.
I mean, are we allowed to spend that six and a half that was allocated for Kimberly towards these other projects?
No, no, we have to actually send it back to VDOT.
So does that money just sit there until we do something else with Kimberly, or are we taking it off and going to repurpose the resources that we had?
We would take a look and repurpose our resources.
Okay, so we've got their six and a half, which we'd have to return if we don't do Kimberly? And then we've got this, our 50%, our six and a half is sitting in the pot that we can reallocate.
Yeah, we would have the flexibility to reallocate our own funding.
Okay, thank you. Anyone last time, any other questions? If not, thank you very much for your presentation. We've got a lot of good projects going on. Okay, that concludes our work session. We do have a need for a closed meeting this afternoon, so ask our clerk to please read the motion for consideration.
Pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1, the discussion consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment and the assignment, appointment, and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city, specifically the appointments as shown in the attached list for vacancies or term expirations, for the Downtown Advisory Committee, the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Economic Development Authority of the City of Suffolk, the Historic Landmarks Commission, the Human Services Advisory Board, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, the Paul D. Camp Community College Board, the Sister Cities Commission, the Tidewater Youth Services Commission, the Western Tidewater Community Services Board, and the Virginia Municipal League Policy Committees, and the appointment of an interim city manager. Item number two, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3, the discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically Tax Map Number 34G 234*1, 34G 23A*115A, 34G 23A*115B, 34*50, and 34G 17A*39.
Counsel, a motion has been presented for consideration, but your pleasure. Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Move to approve.
A motion for approval from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Councilmember Bennett.
Second.
Second from Councilman Bennett, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record to vote.
If Councilmember Bennett, there we go. The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned, and we will reconvene at 6:00 PM.
I pushed it. Nope.